Mr. Steeler.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Young?
Here.
Commissioner Miller is absent, and Commissioner Stender is absent. But Chair Gerrier, are you here?
Here.
Thank you. We're asked if you're able, please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of British Commons, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, just as it is.
Thank you. Chair is looking for a motion to approve the agenda as presented or with changes.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
I have a motion. I have a second.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. It's a non-negotiable motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Chair is looking for a motion to approve or deny the consent agenda. There are two items. Approved the planning commission meeting minutes from September 11, 2024, and the variance for reports addition at 919 North Shore Drive, Aaron Wilson and Stephen Krenz, Resolution Number 10-23-24-01.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion. I have a second.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
No polling, I don't think, or nothing. Look at that.
Hear me?
Just...
Quiet. She's pretty quiet down there in the left wing.
Okay.
Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Our first regular agenda item has a public hearing. It's a rezoning of property to allow for a lot line adjustment. Kelly Hofer, 56 Fourth Street Southwest. The way this will work this evening is that the city will present the application as they understand it. Planning Commission members will ask any clarification questions that they may have. We will then ask the applicant if they would like to add anything or think that's important. We may have questions for the applicant. After we get through that part, we will then have the public hearing. I'll give more instructions how that will work at the public hearing time, and then when that closes, we'll come back and have further discussion and decision rendered by the planning commission. So with that, Ken, are you presenting?
Yes, I am, Mr. Chair. I don't know if our mics are working though. We're getting it.
Maybe not. My work?
I'm just getting the right images.
You're loud.
All my stuff.
I've been in meetings all day using my big voice. Get about worn out.
You retired.
Nobody told folks in Forest Lake that.
There we go. Thank you. So the request for you before you this evening, as you introduce Mr. Chair, originally started out as a lot line adjustment for the property at 56 Fourth Street Southwest. That is this property here, and they have worked in agreement with the church to the north at 420 Broadway Avenue to buy a 44-foot wide strip of land across here to widen their property out. And so the applicants submitted a lot line adjustment to the city to move this lot line 44 feet to the north. Well, when we started investigating it, that all seemed fine, but then we found out that the zoning on the church property is different than the zoning on... Ah, darn it. I'm not... Anyway, the church property zoning is different, and the way the city code is written is the zoning of the parcel that is going to the single-family property has to be consistent with the zoning of that use that's there. So the request has been made to change the zoning of this strip of land from B1, which is our Broadway commercial up and down Broadway, to the MXR2 zoning, which is the large area to the south and the residential properties to the south and east and west of this home. So we have two requests for your consideration this evening. One is the lot line adjustment, and I'm going to try to find that survey again. It was in your packets, and hopefully you can pull it up and have a better look than I'm having. Here, let's try this one. Here we go. There we go. I'll zoom this in a little bit. So again, this shows it much more clearly. The applicant's property, Kelly's property, is here. He's proposing to buy parcel A1 from the church and then to enlarge his property. But again, the zoning here is still the commercial designation because it's currently part of the church property. So the lot line adjustment, if we didn't have the zoning issue, would be fine, no issues. They are worked, have worked out an access easement agreement across the church parking lot here to get to the garage because that is going to remain, and that's part of their agreed purchase with the property. And then again, one of the conditions that staffs requesting is that all three of these parcels be combined into one for tax and identification purposes. The main issue for the commission to consider this evening is the rezoning, again, of this strip of land from the B1 to the MXR2, and as I outlined in the staff report, the zoning map amendment for this case meets all our criteria and standards, and we're recommending approval of that. We really had no public comments. I did get one neighbor who sent me an email saying they were supportive of this. We did advertise the public hearing, and that was a result of that notice. That is the only comment I've received about this. The lot line adjustment, again, excuse me, meets our standards, criterias for a lot line adjustment. The zoning map amendment meets those criteria as well. So we have two recommendations for you this evening. First one, starting on the bottom of, which is page four of this report, is recommend approval of the proposed lot line adjustment as outlined in the packet, and both of these are for council action. And then secondly, we're recommending approval to the city council of the proposed zoning map amendment for this piece here, and I guess with that, that's really the two actions we're asking you to consider this evening. The applicant is here to answer questions if you have any, but otherwise, at this point, I will take questions.
Commissioners, questions?
Nope.
Nope.
It's plain and simple.
It does look really simple, but my only concern is not with the deeded access to the garage. My concern is with the future functional access to that garage. If that property is redeveloped and the folks that are doing the snow plowing, for example, at the church, change and that access is plowed in, I just don't want to see battle royale over, you know, who's going to be shoveling out. And again, if the property is redeveloped, how can we make sure that that access will not be functionally impeded in the future? The only concern I have is it's right in the middle of the property, and it's going to be easy to ignore sometime in the future.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, of course, we can't promise everything is going to go smoothly forever. What I would say to your question is, this will become a recorded access easement that will be on the title of the property.
Okay.
And so future buyers, future users, in theory, should be aware of that and accommodate that or negotiate something different with the owner at that time. That's our best protection and the owner's protection as well.
Commissioners, anybody else? Hearing none. I understand the applicants here. Would they like to add any comments to this?
I don't believe so.
You may want to just...
Okay.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Yep, my name is Kelly Hofer. This is my wife Sarah here. I don't think I have anything further to add. He presented it quite well, so unless you have any questions for me.
Questions for her? You're good?
All right. Thank you guys.
Thank you for coming.
Yes, thanks for having us.
This is a public hearing. The way this will work this evening is if you wish to speak to this application, please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, spend a couple of minutes giving us your thoughts on this application. Once everyone has spoken, we will close the public hearing, and we will then bring it back for further discussion and decision by the planning commission. So with that, I will open the public hearing at 7:11 PM. Does anyone wish to speak to this application? Ken, do we have anyone online or anything that needs to be read into the record?
Again, the only comment I received was a supportive email that I received before, after the packet went out, but no additional comments.
Very good. I'll ask one more time. Does anyone wish to speak to this application?
Crowd rushes up.
Seeing no one come forth and no one online to discuss this application, we will close the public hearing at 7:12 PM. Commissioners, what would you like to do?
Ken, you need two motions, correct?
It'd be best, yes.
Two motions, and they are recommendations. City Council has the final decision on this. Commissioner?
Mr. Chair, I would move that the planning commission recommend the city council approval of the proposed lot line adjustment for the property located at 56 Fourth Street Southwest. I would propose only one change to A, B, and C in the recommendations, and that is in B, instead of the wording "property owner to the south," that it be changed with staff's approval to "property owner of 56 Fourth Street, the combined lot." I think for the world, it would be, the more precise language would be helpful.
I agree.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Chair is looking for a motion for recommendation number two.
Do you want to make that motion?
Go for it.
Well, I'll make a motion for the zoning map amendment for the parcel in discussion.
I have a motion for the zoning ordinance map amendment. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Just for clarification, that's the change as outlined in the staff report. I assume we're not changing different zonings to different things.
Right.
Correct.
The change is as detailed in the staff proposal, yeah.
Any other discussion?
No, sir.
Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. So we have moved forward with the process at this stage, and next it will go to city council, and it will be, do we have a date?
November 12th.
On November 12th. So, and they are the ones who make the final decision in this case, so good luck on your acquisition, becoming quite the land baron. Thanks for coming. Item 6B?
Kelly, if you want to stay, you can, but if you want to go. Not trying to get rid of you.
He was so enthralled with the civic involvement that they just didn't know what to do.
Conditional use permits are fascinating things. It's next on our agenda.
All right. Item number 6B is a public hearing. It's for a conditional use permit and site plan review for Interstate Companies 20920 Forest Road North. Ken, are you presenting?
I am, Mr. Chair. Thank you. So the site of this request is for Interstate Companies. You have the property on Forest Road. This is their facility here just south of Highway 97. As I outlined in the staff report, the city's been working with Interstate Companies over the last two years or a little more to help them or to work with them to figure out a way to bring their site more into compliance. As this aerial photo shows, I'll back up a little bit. Interstate started out in this parcel here. Actually, it started out as a trucking company that they bought out in about 2010, I believe, and then have set up their world headquarters there. And through the years, in the last couple of years, they've actually acquired additional land to the south. This is their existing fence line, and because of space needs, they have started using this area south of the fence. And unfortunately, that use of that property did not go through the proper channels with city approval for the outdoor storage and the site alterations without site plan approval. And so since then, we've been working with them to work through plans and proposals of what they can do with their entire parcel, their entire site, I should say. I'll jump to seven here. So this is, again, their current facility. This is all their more recently acquired property. This is the area where they've been using now, some of it for their outdoor storage, and their master plan is to enlarge this outdoor, and add, I should say, this outdoor storage area so they have more room. So as I outlined in the report, if the commission recalls back a little more than a year ago, they brought in their initial applications, which also included the proposed zoning code text amendment to add contractors' yards to the industrial zoning district, and that was reviewed by the commission and approved by the city council in August of 2023. So now we had a tool, if you will, zoning code language on the books to say, okay, if you're going to have a contractor's yard, here's some of the standards for their use and their operation. And at that time, the Interstate had, with their surveyor, submitted plans very similar to this for their expansion, but before the planning commission meeting that this initial site plan was going to be reviewed or considered by the commission, the applicants asked us to not put it on the agenda, not take action on it, and that was just about a year ago. So now, more recently, in September of this year, we were notified by Interstate and through their engineer that they submitted some revised plans, which are on the screen, and they wanted to move forward with these plans. So we've started the review process again. And so again, it's a conditional use permit amendment. Because there is an existing conditional use permit for this facility, the amendment would be to allow the expansion of their outdoor facilities for their contractor's yard. Again, the main focus now is to create what we'd call a storage yard or a lay-down yard in primarily this area, but they are also required by both the city and the watershed district to add stormwater ponding features, which are these areas here. And so they've been working through designs, again, with watershed and city staff to try to accommodate those. The proposed use of the property or expanded use for the outdoor storage for the contractor's yard generally should meet all our standards as we outlined in the code, and I won't go through all of those, but I'll get to the reason why in a minute. The site plan review, then, focuses on, again, the layout, the access. They are only proposing the one access, again, off their existing driveway. No new driveways would go on the Forest Road. They are not proposing any formal parking for here because they, at this point, aren't expecting to add any additional employees. The office, what I would call the office employees, were parked here. They have 28 employees and 32 spaces, and then there is overflow parking in the back if needed. So parking is not an issue. One of the issues we did run into with these plans is about the amount of landscaping, and it's a challenging site to have landscaping because of the way the code is written, we go by the perimeter of the project site, which in this case is over 2,600 linear feet, which by code would require the planting of 88 additional trees and 265 understory or shrubs and trees, and so a total of 353 plantings. They were proposing 79. And again, they want to be able to maximize the use of their site. They have to maintain drainage through here and up here and over here and have their ponding areas, so they are limited on where they can put landscaping. In addition, there is a NSP easement along this side of the site, along the, excuse me, along the east side, along Forest Road, so they're limited, and they really can't put any plantings in that area, certainly not trees because of the power lines, and there is a sanitary sewer main, and there are two, which complicates plantings in that area. So they are limited. So my proposal, as this moves forward, is to work with them to identify areas possibly here, maybe some additional in here where hopefully we could end up with at least 100 plantings. The exterior storage yard, again, the big thing with our CUP requirements and the code now is to have at least 90% opaque screening, to screen the site from the public roads or residential facilities, residential properties. There are no residences nearby, so the screening is proposed to go up about 100 feet on each of the south side, be continuous on the Forest Road side, and then up 100 feet here with screening on their fencing that they have for the security. One of the requirements I'm proposing is that we have a, get more details on that. It may be fine, but until I see more information and example of that, we're kind of withholding judgment on that until hopefully it'll be fine. There are, as I started pointing out, drainage easements that are existing and needed. Again, this area is noted as a drainage easement, and then there's really an important flowage that runs, as I understand it, from the south to the north, up to the west, and then eventually all the way out under Highway 97 to Clear Lake. And so we have to make sure that that functions and is maintained and protected with an easement. They are showing a culvert crossing here to get to this area if and when these plans proceed, but as part of the requirements, we as the city are going to need easements and documents memorializing the existence of those easements and the additional width in areas that we might need. One thing to be aware of too is this is their home base for their operations, and a major part of their business is to do snow and ice removal at large properties around the metro area. So during the winter months, it's very possible that they could have vehicles coming and going at probably almost 8 hours of the day. I'm sure they wouldn't necessarily like to, but I know a lot of places like plowing to get done at 4:00 or 5:00 in the morning before customers get there or other people. So I was proposing in the report that the hours of operation during the winter months would not be any limited hours of operation. I don't think that's reasonable for their business, but in the, what I would call the non-winter months, what should be April through October, that they would be limited to hours of 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, as we would treat almost any other commercial industrial business in town where we're worried about noise and traffic. What we have run into with these set of plans is a lot of concerns from our engineering team and our engineering's reviews from Bolton and Mink, and I've touched on some of those in the report, and because of those concerns, both from our engineer and from the applicant and the applicant's engineer, which include the need for, the city has a need for eventually a water main to be extended in this area to the south, for Forest Road to have some improvements along there because it's not a formally improved public street, and the cost for those and the timing of those and the timing of the improvements. Also some concerns with some of the layouts of the ponding areas and where the fence is going to go as proposed. In summary, if we jump to kind of one of my last pages of the report, the, and after looking at this further, it was staff's recommendation to the applicant that they request a time extension or delay on action by the planning commission, that we grant, by them granting us the time extension, we could then have a meeting with city staff and the Interstate folks and try to work through some of these concerns about the ponding and the fencing and some of the other design elements, and even down to how can we work out who pays for what for the public improvements and when are those payments going to be needed? And Interstate agreed to that, and page nine of this report, I summarize all this as included a statement from Interstate that they requested the time extension or delay in action, both. Because we had advertised this as a public hearing, we had to keep it on the agenda. We'll hold the public hearing, taking comments if there's anybody that wish. Wish is to comment. I wanted to give you a high-level overview of the project, let you know we're working on it. It's not all resolved, so at some point, it will be coming back to you, but at this point, we're, the recommendations are to table indefinitely, taking action on both the conditional use permit amendment and the site and design plan approval for the project at the request of the applicant. Again, have the public hearing, take any testimony that might be. You can ask me questions. The applicants are here. They can ask or take questions if you wish, if you want to wait until the plans evolve further. I guess that's a choice of the commission, but we're here. So at a minimum, I would recommend, I'll take questions, have the public hearing, and see where we go from there.
Commissioner, any question?
Yeah.
You want me to go first? You want to go first?
You go first.
Ken, I have two questions for you. One is, first off, I don't think they could be in a better spot from what the type of business they are in the city. There's no residents around there. Noise is not an issue. They got the Interstate right there. That being said, they're proposing a six-foot fence so they can't be seen from Forest Road, but they're going to stack 16 feet tall. So how, what am I missing?
Well, I don't know for sure that they're going to be stacking anything there. They haven't clarified that. This may only be equipment storage. I know in this back area, they have material that's stacked. That'll be a good question for the applicant because if they are going to be stacking, then we would like to know that. If it's trucks and equipment and materials that don't stack that high, I don't think it's an issue. But I put in, I was proposing a limit just so that something doesn't go 20 feet high or higher. Maybe 12 feet will be enough. So I think that's a fair question for the applicant.
And I personally don't care if you see stuff from Forest Road as much. I'm more concerned, what do I see from the bike trail, you know, as you kind of come into town? So if you could let us know at a future time what that would look like, that would be great. My second question is there, we have a requirement that for asphalt or concrete, and they're looking to put crushed rock?
Correct.
Which is not dustless unless there's a process, and I don't know, maybe there is. I'm not...
And if I may, Mr. Chair, the code amendment for contractor's yard says the exterior storage area must be improved with a dustless surface material, and if they can keep the rock dustless by whatever means, then I... And if they can keep the rock dustless by whatever means, then I'm comfortable with that. The, the challenge is if you or anybody paves this with blacktop or concrete and there's equipment dropped or dropped off, it doesn't hold up. It, it breaks up unless you built it like an airport runway, which is a huge investment. And I don't think they'd want to take that on. So the idea is you have the rock area and if they will be responsible for dust control, however they can do that.
So we wouldn't even require, for lack of a better term, like a runway as they're exiting or something to leave it all on property or?
The only area that additional paving would be this driveway here. And then this is all bituminous that they would be going out to the road. But once you get past this point, then it's all proposed to be rock.
Thank you. Susan?
Ken, I'm looking at the aerial. Um, can you verify for me that all of the places where they are currently parking trucks, their off-season trucks, um, and their, um, shift trucks are currently asphalt or concrete, including that area to the east and south of the building where it looks like there are cars?
If we're looking at the site plan in this area?
I'm looking at the aerial.
Okay. Uh, no, it's not.
Okay, so they're, they're, they're not, they're not in compliance in their existing area with what our rules would be?
I, I guess you could say that, yes. They are proposing, if you look on the site plan, additional bituminous here around the backside of the building, their existing building, but their, this would still remain rock.
Where I'm looking at is, um, you look at the building, come down, that area, those are cars parked. Um, and it's obviously a, that's how a lot of folks get back to, to trucks. Um, is that all paved or concrete?
This is all shown to be paved along the south side of the building. And then they would be adding more pavement around the west side of the building.
So it's currently not paved, but would be paved?
Well, next to the building is paved. It's paved and striped.
This part is, but not this part.
Oh, no, I think she was referring to this entryway.
I'm looking at here.
Yeah.
The problem with the map is the, the one, the aerial goes one way and then it's a flip. So everything's upside down. So it takes a little bit, not for you, Doc, because you're a very smart man, but a guy like me, it takes a while.
Um, and, and I guess at, at some point, I'd like to ask the applicant, is it, they have thirty-two office employees, but then the number of folks that they have driving that are not office people, because they all have to park their vehicles to get their sanders and plows, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Um, and do we have sufficient parking for them? Um, Ken, has the applicant told you that they will clean up this area that is not currently permitted? Um, two oh nine, where the two oh nine two oh is, um, up to the property line, that they will remove that material until they have a proper permit and proper, um, they're in compliance?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, that has been a plan, a much debated discussion between city staff and the applicants. And they are hoping, uh, I'm going to use, I'm going to paraphrase what I think they'll say, that while they are working in good faith with the city to get a, a plan, they're hoping for some latitude to continue to use some of this area, even though it's non-compliant.
My concern is that, that we've been, the city has been patient for two years. And the wording tonight is indeterminate.
Correct.
And, um, we have a history with other properties that I, I, I know that Interstate is, is better than that. And, um, I would, we need to get this straightened out and correct and, and fly right because we, we can't say to other properties, we need you to work within our rules if, if we're allowing a company just to keep extending and extending. And so I guess I, I know that Interstate is better than that. And I'm, I would hope that we would have some sort of clear expectation of, of when we'll get a final.
I, I think Interstate and staff would agree that we, we would like to have a plan that everyone can support, get this moving forward. And we were, we're closer, but we're not there yet.
Other questions at this time, Susan?
I know the applicant's here, and I think that's a fair question to ask them.
Um, Ken, is the, was it NSP or Excel easement, is that an overhead or subsurface easement?
There's an overhead power line.
Okay, so, um, they do allow vegetation fifteen to twenty feet under those power lines. Um, so a significant amount of understory vegetation could be placed in there. And I, I had the same question about the sixteen-foot and the six-foot fence. Thank you very much, Ken.
Um, I understand the applicant is here. Would you like, care to address the planning commission? We ask you, you just come up, state your name and address for the record, please.
Greg Dumke with Interstate Companies. Uh, I don't really have anything more to really add to what Ken said other than I'd like to address what Ms. Young had brought up regarding the, uh, you know, the, the patience. And we appreciate that from Forest Lake, but we also need you to understand that, uh, you know, we have also been patient. We've been really trying for a long time to try to get this passed through, uh, through the council and, uh, and the planning commission. So it's, uh, we've run into roadblocks. As Ken had mentioned, we've also got some issues with the easements that, and the requirements that have drawn this out. So with that, we hope to have this done as soon as we possibly can as well. I mean, it's our desire to be in that property and using it the way it's intended to be used or should be used by the spring.
Can you, uh, explain how you're going to keep the rock dustless? I, I'm just curious.
Sure. Well, Interstate also has a sister company called Northern Salt, which also does dust control for Washington County and, and the, the surrounding area. So, you know, we, we have the, the means and the resources to do dust control as well. Any traprock that we might be used would be considered a dustless type of a surface as well. The permeable surface needs to be maintained for that area, considering that it's a lay-down yard.
Thank you. Susan?
The problem with using salt or brine to, as dust control in that area is you've got a really short distance to Clear Lake. And there is not really a good sedimentation, uh, control for salt runoff from, from that property if you're using that as your dust control product.
I think some of the, you know, in the design, there is also holding ponds that are on the property. There's, I believe, three or four of them before it would even ever be discharged to a ditch that would run towards Highway ninety-seven.
But that, salt is a dissolved solid, not, not a particulate. And so you don't get it to settle out in a, in a holding pond. Uh, I guess I disagree with Ken about, um, hard surfaces for, um, for large trucks. I'm forty-five years in public works.
It's going to, that's going to probably end up being a conversation with the watershed district because the permeable surface is something that's, that's a necessity for that area as well.
But I think you've got a lot. And is, Ken, help me on the, what's on the screen? Is the top the north?
No, the north is over here. This is west.
All right, thank you. So it would be the southeast area, I under-
Down here.
Down there. Down, thank you. Um, I understand is not to be developed.
That's correct.
So you have really significant impermeable area there. Um, that has the opportunity not only for serving that purpose, but also for vegetation. Every public works facility that I, that I work at has scrapers, front loaders, plow trucks, pavers, paving equipment, and we don't beat up the pavement. It's just, yeah.
If there's, if there's a way for us to be able to pave everything, that, we're a paving company too. So, I mean, we would be fine with putting pavement in. That's not been the, um, the choice or the, uh, the layout, the designs at this point, due to the fact that it, it's been needed to be a permeable surface in order to reach the standards that the watershed district was looking for.
Ken, help me, but on this site, they can achieve ninety percent impermeable, correct?
By city standards, but I think what Mr. Dumke is referring to is the watershed district's really pushing to not have pavement, solid pavement over much of the site.
Okay, but my concern is the areas where there are parking trucks, the areas where they are driving, the getting to and from the maintenance areas, where your, where your employees and your, your shift employees that are not office, but are, are truck staff, um, are parking.
Yeah, I mean, it's certainly, it's certainly worth looking at. And as, as Ken had mentioned, we are, we do have a meeting scheduled for next Wednesday, I believe, to try to hammer all these, these type of situations out with your city engineer as well as our engineering group. If paved surfaces is something that, uh, you know, make, will make this happen, we by all means would welcome that.
Thank you.
Any further questions to the applicant? Thank you for coming this evening. Good luck on your project.
Mayor, we are going to have the public hearing, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. This will work just like the last one. We'll open it to the public. Anyone who wishes to speak to this application, please step forward. Give us a couple of minutes with your thoughts on this application. Once everyone is heard, we will close the public hearing. So we will open the public hearing at seven forty-two PM. And I, I will note that we are taking public opinion on both, um, recommendations for the continuous use permit amendment and the site plan changes. So, does anyone wish to speak to this application? Ken, do we have anything to read in to the, or anyone online who wishes to speak?
We do not, Mr. Chair.
I'll ask one more time. Does anyone wish to speak to this application? Seeing no one come forward and no one online that wishes to speak, we will close the public hearing at seven forty-three PM. Commissioners, further discussion or motions? It's up to you. What would you like to do? Susan?
Mr. Chair, I move to table, um, action on the proposed conditional use amendment for the property at two oh nine twenty Forest Road North.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
It's a non-debatable motion. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Chair is looking for a motion to, uh, for the site plan, site and design plans?
I'll make, excuse me, I'll make a motion to table, indefinitely taking action on the site and design plans for the proposed expansion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Again, it's a non-debatable motion. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention?
Abstain. Um, I have an issue with the indefinitely. The first motion did not include indefinitely. I'm just going to abstain.
Very good. Motion carries. We'll see you again. I don't know when, but good luck on your project. Hope it all goes well.
I noticed she left indefinitely on hers. I noticed she left out indefinitely. I thought, why did she leave that out? I didn't think it was that big of a deal. So I think they're going to sit down and hammer this out, so.
Uh, item seven, a discussion, comprehensive plan amendment, house, housing density, density revisions. We didn't, I assume we're having a presentation since there was no packing materials?
It's a brief presentation. Uh, wanted to walk you through some of the findings that we've... I can see why Ken didn't think these are on. It's hard to tell. Can you hear me all right?
You're going to have to be up close to the mic, though. Let's try this one.
Is this better?
As I, as I told the school board candidates at Rotary today, you got to use your outdoor voice.
How is this?
Much better.
Okay, so I'm here tonight to talk with you about, uh, city, a potential city-initiated comprehensive plan amendment. A little bit of background, I started with the city of Forest Lake in early summer of twenty-two and very quickly had started to see an increased inquiries in high-density residential along the Highway sixty-one corridor. I think many members of this commission have also seen the increase in high-density residential inquiries, but really started to, tried to understand why it was that we were starting to see them along the Highway sixty-one corridor. It was determined early on that our mixed-use future land use district allows for high-density residential. The challenge with our high den, our mixed-use district is it will allow for one-hundred percent residential. The intent of that district was to remain flexible to allow for either residential or commercial. Unfortunately, the city adopted the comp plan that stating that that mixed-use district would be a minimum of fifty percent, but could also go to a hundred percent. So this kind of raised an alarm for me in the question of whether or not it was the city's intent to have the potential for high-density residential along the entire Highway sixty-one corridor because that whole corridor, kind of Park, Hyde Waters Parkway South, is guided for that mixed-use resident, uh, future land use. Are you guys with me thus far? Good. How about the, Commissioner Wagner, you, you following me too?
Yes.
Okay, good. In twenty-twenty-three, um, I asked Bolton and Mink, who did our comprehensive plan and were our consulting planners at the time, to look at, um, to determine that residential density assessment. What I asked them to kind of do is to do some analysis, one of how did we get to where we were, where are we concentrating some of our residential densities? And to really look to see if there were opportunities where we might be able to explore balancing out our residential densities in a different way, i.e., having the question, do we really want to have high-density residential down the entire Highway sixty-one corridor? Bolton and Mink came back and said, you know, we're really not too sure how we got to where we are. Okay, so in twenty-twenty-four, we processed two comprehensive plan amendments and we reviewed Met Council Imagine twenty-fifty plan comments. Seemingly unrelated things, but it's all relating to our comp plan and how it is that we are conforming to the regional policy guidelines. One of the things that we learned during the amendment processes with both the daycare along Highway eight and sixty-one and the townhomes of Shadow Creek, um, there was no density changes overall for the city. So we're still sitting at our, our, uh, average residential density of just over three units per acre, citywide. Right? That makes sense? Anyone following me so far? But what we've learned is the Met Council doesn't have the same data in their tables as we have in our tables. The Met Council has the same average density, so they're saying, okay, city of Forest Lake, you are meeting the minimum three units per acre, but all of the documentation supporting how, where they're at and the documentation supporting where we're at is different. And we can't figure out why. So we determined that it's probably most appropriate or even needed that we need to amend the comp plan to have the same baseline as the Met Council. Now, what a lot of people would say is we'll just take the Met Council's data and, and use that as our own. The challenge is, is this gives us an opportunity at the moment to take a look at where we have our residential densities planned and where we might be able to make some tweaks now to still maintain that three units per acre that the Met Council needs us to have, um, but also poise us to be in a better position when we know we need to talk about housing density in the Twenty-Fifty Plan. So I know a lot of this was kind of verbally spewed at you, but one of the things that I wanted to talk with the Planning Commission tonight about is understanding the concept of a city-initiated comp plan amendment, and if overall there's general support from the Planning Commission that we go through this process to establish the baseline standard with Metropolitan Council. From your direction, I would also ask the Council the same thing before we actually formally start that process, given the fact that it is a city-initiated application. Staff can't just necessarily go out and do this on my own, but what I would say is I would recommend we do. At the moment, do you have questions for me, Commissioner Young?
Okay. Are you proposing that we're going to take the Met Council's data as gospel, or that the Met Council will take our, our data as gospel?
We've had preliminary conversations with the Metropolitan Council staff. This would be a full council board review, but we believe that based on kind of the proposal that we'd put forth to them, they would accept our data.
And may I assume that our data is more advantageous to the long-term vision of the city as having a residential rural mix?
Yes, that is correct. So I've heard from a number of planning commissioners, I'll just say, appointed and elected officials of the concern for the amount of high-density residential that's been going into the community. I've, I think I've shared with you, I think that it's still an appropriate mix or a balanced mix for most communities, but I do recognize that we have some policies in our comp plan that we may be able to change now, that continue to help support, uh, the, the vision of Forest Lake as Forest Lake's historically been, while also positioning us well if we need to change from the minimum three units per acre to, as I told you at the last meeting, I think, or the last time we met, to the minimum four units per acre if that becomes the standard for us in the next comp plan around.
Unlike Woodbury's and, and, and Lake Elmo's, that can take their ag land and their, and, and turn that into fairly high-density housing, um, we really can't. We are not set up, and I don't believe ever can be set up, to water and sewer the area east of sixty-one significantly. I mean, it's, yeah, it's, it's a, it's a public works thing. And I don't believe that that meets the vision of the city either. The other thing that has, and has really disturbed me is that we have significant high-density housing apartment complexes nowhere near the services that those residents need and deserve. And, and so I'm, I'm hoping that as you're going to go forward, you're going to tell us kind of exactly what kinds of policies you're looking to change and, and how you would like to change things.
Yes. Um, so right now, that baseline standard wouldn't envision major changes. Um, the whole idea is to try to get our baseline to match the Met Council's, but to be favorable to, more favorable to Forest Lake. I have to, we will walk through why, uh, where it is the changes would be occurring and why they would be occurring in the way, but it would be my recommendation that we look at things like that Highway sixty-one corridor and, and question whether or not that is where we should be putting high-density residential. I just don't think that the Forest Lake of the Futures image is high-density residential along a major commercial corridor at, at the southern entrance to the community.
So the zoning currently is, makes use so it can be commercial or residential, correct?
The future land use is mixed use, and mixed use says it could be residential or commercial, but it must be a minimum of fifty percent residential. And the city weighted its average residential densities citywide pretty heavily on that minimum fifty percent residential in that mixed-use dis, uh, future land use district.
If I hear you right, you're advocating more commercial applications or businesses on sixty-one versus?
We would look to see how it is we can reduce the reliance on all the housing along that corridor. Now, we'll need to place that housing someplace else within the community, but, but yes, it's one, establishing a baseline, and two, whether or not we want to look at that MXR, that mixed-use future land use.
So, my, my question is then, I mean, maybe I'm, I'm just a little tense tonight, but, um, are you, are we advocating then that we want this to be a commercial thoroughfare versus a residential?
I'm not advocating that it be a commercial thoroughfare. I think that is worthy of consideration. What we're seeing is because the future land use says it can be one hundred percent residential, we are seeing applications and inquiries for one hundred percent residential. The inquiries for mixed use, I think we maybe thought, um, that design standard of commercial on the bottom, residential on the top, what could kind of work, it doesn't look like that's an industry standard that's as well-supported as much as anymore. But more than anything, as I, I can't emphasize enough, the biggest thing that we're going to do without major tweaks is establish that baseline so that it's favorable to us in terms of our average residential density, that we're not only showing compliance with the Metropolitan Council's, uh, regional considerations, but also that we're well poised to have some of those conversations in the future about where should we be placing higher-density residential that unfortunately we're going to need to accommodate. It's just where do we want to accommodate it?
Comment down here. All right, Susan?
When the Twenty-Forty Comp Plan was put together, the Twenty-Forty Comp Plan that was presented to the Met Council by the city council at that time was not the Twenty-Forty Comp Plan that the Planning Commission and the city advisory groups forwarded to the council. There was a essentially last-minute change by the city council to make that entire sixty-one corridor MXR, um, high-density and, and, and industrial on the, more toward thirty-five, thirty-five, as a way of trying to force the state to put the additional highway, or Interstate Thirty-five access by County Road, by a hundred and seventieth, right?
Hundred and eighty.
Hundred, hundred and eightieth, hundred and seventieth, that, that area. That was not the vision or the recommendation of the Planning Commission and the advisory committees that worked so hard on that plan. And it was not done with any ed, ed, advice or, um, input from those folks that had worked to develop the Twenty-Forty Plan. So this, unfortunately, this is, these are chickens that are now coming home to roost.
I was aware of the highway business change on the southwest corner, but wasn't aware of the mixed-use along the Highway sixty-one corridor. That mixed-use along that Highway sixty-one corridor was, is really heavily weighted where we're going to be placing our residential density. So it surprised me if that would have been a last-minute change, and it's good to just know that history. So I'm hearing, I'm hearing from some of you that you understand the concept of why I'd like to do the city-initiated project. We can need to, to get our baseline data together with the Metropolitan Council, um, and that you'd, you'd recommend we do the, at least get our data consistent with the council.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Would it be possible, um, for you to provide members of the commission that are interested with the, the data from the council's perspective and the data from our perspective so that, that we could, we could see that and, and better understand?
We'll be able to show you, um, when we go through the pro, we still have a process we have to go through. I just didn't want to start an initiative without having Planning Commission's blessing going to the council, because it is a city-initiated, not a Abby the Development Director initiated, right? To make sure there's support across the board to keep moving forward.
And I would just like to better understand, before I say, yeah, this is really cool, to, to better understand exactly what we're looking at.
Mm-hmm, yep, we'll do that. You'll get a chance.
Commissioners, any other comments or concerns?
No, I think it's a good opportunity to get it tweaked the way we want to. It seems, you know, it opens the door for us to make this.
Yep. I think it's, it, we can't even start talking about some of those major tweaks until we get that baseline data put in place, so.
Anything else you need from us, Abby?
Not on the subject matter, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Move on to staff updates. Uh, we have a zoning code update first.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, as you recall, hopefully, was it six months, four months ago, we went through the first step of updating zoning code with our consultants from MSR, MSA.
Wasn't it snowing then, Ken?
It's been a while.
That would have been Halloween, because we didn't have any snow after that.
And, and the first go-around, it was no language changes, just reorganizing all the words into a better flow. We're now getting ready to kick off step two of the update, and what we will be focusing on in the next, yeah, two, three, four months is what I would call the low-hanging fruit. Things where there's code sections that are inconsistent. Maybe it says one word over here, but it says this other word over here, but really they mean the same thing. We gotta, there's a lot of that we can straighten out without policy changes, without major, hopefully not major brain work, just to make it so the code, as we read it all the way through, if it says one thing in the first chapter, it says the same thing in chapter six or whatever. So we'll be bringing that to you. I don't know if it'll be all in one piece or in pieces, but for example, uh, we have in the zoning code language about if you want to have a home occupation, here's the standards that you needed to follow, but we don't define what a home occupation is. So we need to add a definition of what home occupation is, is into the code, things like that. So we'll be, uh, again, bringing, bringing pieces of that to you, hopefully in the next two, three months, to make the zoning code even better. So you can look forward to that.
Questions?
The first part, they took out a lot of redundancies and things like that, I believe is the thing, wasn't it?
Well, and that will be part of this too, is we don't, hopefully don't need to say the same thing or very similar thing four different times, just get it in one place. Because it, what happens is through time, Susan can relate to this, if you have it in four different places, but only edit the first one, but forget the other three, then you end up with the inconsistencies. If you just have it in one place, everybody finds it, then as edits occur, you do it one time. And so yes, Jeff, to answer your question, if there are redundancies or overlaps or inconsistencies, we're going to try to clean all those up.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions, concerns on the zoning code update? So we have, uh, AP is Met Transit Network Now. I believe we have a handout and?
Yeah, you do have a handout on the dais tonight. Um, this is, I'm coming to you as a courtesy, but also to let the public know, Metro Transit is proposing to eliminate, um, the previously suspended bus routes to Forest Lake. So bus routes that were in operation pre-pandemic were suspended during the pandemic, and now they are proposing to eliminate them completely. This is a part of the Met Transit's Network Now Plan. So the last time we were together, we talked about the Imagine Fifty, the big Met Council plan, the twenty-year, thirty-year plan. Met Transit's really trying to kind of look at things a little bit more short-term, so their Network Now Plan is aimed to be fully implemented by twenty-twenty-seven. It's kind of the idea of we need to build the network for what we need now, and what they think they need now is no public transit in Forest Lake. So, um, on Monday evening, the, uh, city council will consider submitting these formal comments to, uh, the Met Council, essentially stating, um, that we're in opposition to this, that our, our residents and our business and our employees will have to drive fifteen to twenty miles an hour to the nearest service stations in Lionel Lakes and Blaine, which likely means that there's this drive into Minneapolis and St. Paul, adding additional congestion. I noticed, I note in the memo, in the letter about local taxes, uh, being paid, not only for the parking ride that exists, but to offset affordable housing that's near that, and also just the taxpayer burden, uh, we are paying, all of you, if you're landowners, are paying into the Metro Transit District. Also note, um, lastly, that we, we recognize their need to create this, um, vision, but we believe that utilizing pre-pandemic old ridership data and not giving Forest Lake residents, it's region, almost fifty thousand people in our school district boundary, is a disservice to the Forest Lake area. So tonight, um, really if you want to discuss and add any other suggestions for us to add into the letter for the city council, I will say I know that it's probably not nearly as strong as some people would like, um, but I wanted to bring this forward to you as well as actually make kind of that public announcement to the public as well. The Network Now Plan is online, and there is the ability to make comment online, but we send these directly to our sector representatives, um, our, our sector planners, those, the people that are working on the plan itself.
Comments? Thank you for your speaking.
Yes, sir.
You look like you're ready to just have steam from both ears.
Yes. Abby, um, when you talk about Transit Link, could you please add a sentence or two? And if you like, I'll go home tonight and, and draft a couple if, if that would be helpful. That Transit Link does not serve the residents of Forest Lake adequately because our major hospital is across the line in Shisago County, and Transit Link will not go the three miles to serve our residents, especially since we have a significant elder population that would depend on, on that. In addition, uh, our position close to Anoka County, which is not served either, um, gives us a double whammy. So, uh, we're bordered by places that Transit Link will not go, and so our residents are doubly damaged by only being able to use Transit Link.
That's a great point, thank you. I, I've included that in other comment letters before, just that ability to go out of our, our jurisdictional boundary is challenging.
The other problem is, is because we are, um, in, in what they still consider the excerpts, we do not have sufficient Transit Link, um, assignment, uh, vehicle assignments to adequately cover the needs of our residents in a timely manner, which has led them to need to, uh, schedule appointments weeks in advance instead of the convenience in scheduling that residents instead of the convenience in scheduling that residents closer and cities closer to the downtown areas enjoy. I would like for you and, and the mayor to consider an additional paragraph perhaps that says that the Met council has expectations of high-density residential development. Those expectations are based by the Met council on a transit-oriented regional development and regional system. And that when they remove the opportunity for that transit, for those transit opportunities, they should also remove their demands for residential density above the vision and desires of the city of Forest Lake.
Was that polite, sir?
Excellent.
Those are all very great comments. I will try to incorporate them in, and they're very valid comments, thank you.
Abby, you covered both, having in the letter, having to go to Lionel Lakes or?
Blaine.
So is, you know, they used to go to Running Aces, is that no longer there?
No, that's also being proposed to be discontinued. So it used to run from our service center to, to running, or Running Aces to our service center, and then in our vice versa, and they're both being eliminated.
Yeah, because my, my wife used to write that.
Yeah, I, I wrote it, my daughter wrote it, that's how she got to high school. What, what really? And, and perhaps there's a better way to say this, but the communities that did not participate in the Transit Taxing District are now the communities that have excellent transit service and significant parking ride infrastructures. And that if they are to remove the transit opportunities, we have an expectation that they will also remove the obligation for the transit tax, transit sales tax.
I had assumed that was part of that last statement of the demand to remove demands on the community, but I can put density in.
Let's just say it really, really clearly, please.
And again, this will go to the council on Monday. They may make some edits as well, but I will beat them up with some of the suggestions that you have, Susan.
Anything else on this subject?
Not on this, I do have a few just really quick verbal updates when you're ready.
And, and Mr. Chair, I, I was the author and advocated strongly for the Transit Taxing District because we had the opportunity for Forest Lake residents to save a bunch of money and to be able to live up here without having two or three cars if they were commuting into the Twin Cities. And it did help a lot of people. There's a bait and switch there that's really torquing me off.
Duly noted. All right, we'll start with staff updates. We have Councilmember Roberts here this evening. Is there anything you'd like to comment on this evening?
Thank you, Chair, just, just a couple of comments, and then I'll be open some questions to you. I appreciate with all the, the flux and change with city administrator, the, the fact that staff is still moving things forward, like the comp plan thing and this, and redoing the zoning and all that, so I appreciate that. Because it's been not, not been easy for staff without really knowing, having a, a leader here. So just want to make that comment. Susan, you and I really don't always agree on a lot of stuff, but your, your point, your points here, just the last points here are very valid, and I totally agree. And I think if the Met council is going to ask X of us, we need to ask Y of them. And so, very, very valid. So just an update on our, speaking of flux and change, our administration, our administrator search, you know, it's been a challenge. We're almost going on a year without a permanent person in that position. We do, we had named three finalists. Unfortunately, one of the finalists did take a different job here, we just learned that this week. So we do have, we're down to two finalists. I'm optimistic that we're going to find someone out of those two. We have interviews scheduled for a week from Friday. There is some opportunity for input, community stakeholder, department heads, and so that will be on, on Friday. Again, concerning there's only two, but I think out of those two, we, we hopefully will land on someone there. So other than that, any questions of, of me?
Councilmember, how, how would we be able to provide that community input?
So that is a good question. We do have a community stakeholders panel, and based on asking the same group that did that on the first go-around, we've had less input or less availability. So if you're interested in being a part of that, I think if you reached out to the city clerk or the interim city administrator, Jolene, she would be more than welcome, and so would we, to include anyone in that stakeholders panel.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
And, and again, thank you for your time. It's nice to have another planning commission meeting. I know I haven't been present at very many, but I appreciate your time, effort, and your thoughts on all this, so thanks.
Thank you. Abby?
So three updates. One, Two Rivers Land Trusts, they are an affordable nonprofit housing organization, does have a house for sale in Forest Lake. It's a three-bedroom, two-bath located on 10th Street Southwest. They're housing our income restrictions, a single person, a gross income of 68.5, a family of four of 97.8. Just letting all of you know, they've, we've had contact with the sellers or just the agency that's helping sell the property for Two Rivers. But it's always a tricky thing, trying to find the people that might be able to be in these homes, but a lot of times they just don't know that they're available. So just letting you guys know, and our friendly viewers at home know, because I'm sure everybody's sitting at home watching this PR statement about affordable housing, so.
But they'd have to reach out to Two Rivers directly?
They would reach out directly to Two Rivers Land Trust, yes. And I could always help them get in touch if they needed, so. Secondly, you may or may not have seen, the Veterans Memorial Committee last week gained approval of their design from the city council. So pending their ability to raise funds and enter into a formal agreement with the city council, groundbreaking on the structure will start next fall as anticipated. That being said, the Veterans Memorial Committee is shy about $275,000. I know that they're out right now, asking community members and organizations for funding, but go ahead and help raise the word that they are, they are in need of a little bit more of assistance. I will say, we did get notice earlier today that they had received a sizable pledge, a three-year pledge, that knocks a good almost third off. So I, they're, they're getting there, but the more the merrier that can, can help get the word out, I think will be great for that project. If they're able to raise the funds, the entire project would be done in spring of '26. So Memorial Day dedication is the goal. And then lastly, we're just about to release our Save the Date for Hometown Holiday, Friday, December 6th. So 4:30 to 6:30 in Lakeside Memorial Park, there's going to be petting zoo, Santa visits, small vendors, bonfires, hot chocolate, before the city's tree lighting. We are in need of volunteers, looking for about 40 bodies to help us in different shifts for an hour or all day if you want. So feel free to reach out to me, I can send you the link to where to sign up. And then also sponsorships are available between $100 and $750.
Abby, if you could get me that link, I already have Rotarians that have said that they're interested.
I sent it to Angie yesterday.
Thank you.
You know what, though, the link didn't work, so I'll resend it with just the link, but yeah.
For some reason, I thought the date was the 7th, so.
It's Friday, December 6th.
Thank you.
That's all I have, lots of happy upbeat things. After going through zoning code amendments and comp plan stuff, right?
Oh, that's good stuff, come on. What do you have first, Ken?
I, I don't think I have anything to add at this point. We're, well, I'll, I'll add a little tidbit on code enforcement. We, we had our intern, Jordan, who was here at the last meeting, she's no longer with the city, her internship is completed, so I've been tackling the code enforcement cases, many of which have been resolved. There are a few troubled ones that are taking more time in second and third visits, but we have not forgotten about code enforcement. We're, as time allows, and trying to make time to actively get back out and revisit properties or visit properties that maybe a new complaint has come in. I'm hoping as the fall comes, and it has slowed down some, but it's still ongoing, and we still investigate as needed.
Ken, they really messed up the sidewalk by Shadow Creek.
That isn't a code enforcement thing.
Oh, it's not?
But it is a part of the DA, so we can certainly have our engineers.
The one along Goodview?
No, the one along 202nd.
Right, where they tapped into the sanitary sewer there? Yeah, they were, they were required to restore that.
Before snow flies?
I sure hope so. They think they'll be done before snow flies, so that would be included.
Susan? Don?
Nothing.
All good, sir.
All right, I, I have two announcements. One, thank you, Abby, for the, telling us about the Veterans Memorial. The Forest Lake Masons and the Lions are teaming up this Saturday at the Mason Hall, serving lunch from 11:30 to 2:30 for a $15 donation. You can get a pulled pork, mac and cheese hoagie, it's very tasty. Rotts from Grunhofer's, hot dogs, chips, et cetera. It's at the Mason Hall, all monies will be going to the Veterans Memorial, so. And lastly, I encourage everyone to vote, since we won't meet, but I wish all of the candidates on the planning commission who are running the best, hope you do well. With that, the chair is looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, your honor.
I have a motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion in the seconds, a non-debatable motion. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Thank you all for your service this evening.